Call the city in order, please stand for the question.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic which stands on my nation under God, in its well, liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Feis?
Here.
Mr. Grisbeck?
Here.
Mrs. Hoppe?
Here.
Mrs. Janasik?
Here.
Mr. McGregor?
Here.
Mr. Modrak?
Here.
Mr. Scalzo?
Here.
Mrs. Turner?
Here.
Mr. Christensen?
Here.
All nine members present.
Thank you. First item on the agenda is a presentation from the PNC Capital Markets Group.
Yeah, tonight we have Alicia Henry from PNC Capital Markets. And Chris Brewer is typically our bond counsel with Dinsmore Scholes, but he had a family matter that came up, so Jamie Inferera is standing in for him tonight. And then Alicia, you can introduce that.
Thank you. I have L. Ellis with me as well, working with PNC Capital Markets. Does everybody have a paper copy of our presentation in front of you? All right, thank you. If you could flip past the cover page, and also it's up on the display. PNC Capital Market has served Bethel Park School District for over a decade, so thank you for the opportunity to be here. And we've been running numbers for the better part of a year and working closely with the administration. Tonight, we're going to prepare and review, a summary of a $42 million bond issue for the renovation of Independence Middle School, which is part of the district-wide consolidation and grade alignment program. We've already held the bond rating call with the administration. That went well. Your current bond rating with Moody's is a double A2, and it looks very promising that that is your rating that is going to stay. We're on a tentative schedule if the board does move forward with the bond resolution next week to sell bonds within the next couple of days. I'm sure if you're watching the news, you can see that there's quite a lot of volatility. So the sooner we can sell bonds, the lower the interest rates we can secure for you. With the sale date of next week, we would look to close this bond issue by April 26, so the district would have funds in hands. In the dark blue box, the new money proceeds contemplated is $42 million. We're looking at a wraparound term, which would wrap around your existing debt. We consider this an optimal wrap, and I'll explain that a little better when we get to an example of the amortization. But what that does is it takes your existing debt and wraps around your existing payment. And there's no one spot in time, we don't pick of 20-year or 15-year. There's an optimal year that creates a level payment with your existing debt. So we're choosing the optimal amortization term. The budgetary impact on an annual basis for a $42 million project is roughly $1.6 million. In addition to the $6.4 million, which is your current budget, your new aggregate local share debt service is just over $8 million. I use the term "local share" because your 2016 bond issue is receiving reimbursement. And when we mean "local share," that means net plan con. The all-in TIC today is at 361. If you could flip to page two, this is a real-life visual of what a wraparound looks like. The first box is your existing debt service by fiscal year. As I mentioned, your 2012 and 2016 bonds are roughly a $6.4 million payment out to 2034. The next box, when I mean optimal wrap, we're going to sell 18 years' worth of amortization, taking your new debt service out to 2040. I'd like to bring your attention to fiscal year '34, where you see that as the last payment of your existing bonds. Essentially, for the 2022 bonds, you'll have an interest-only period, where you will only amortize $5,000 worth of bonds, which is legally mandated. So your payment there, the $1.6 million, is truly just interest. Then you'll see in 2035, that payment steps up. So that's not a balloon, or it's not a step-up. Your existing debt will have matured, so we can fit that debt service in there. So when you take the $6.4 million and the $1.6 million of the $42 million, you've got a new aggregate debt service of just over $8 million. As of right now, we do not have to fill in the whole 2040 maturity, so truthfully, this is more like a 17 and a half-year amortization. Any questions on this so far? All right, hearing none. Some people are not numbers, and some people are...
I guess the question I had is, by extending, by pushing out the payment on principal, what's more or less the premium that we pay in interest by extending, you know, the total payoff versus, you know, paying off principal? Obviously, it'll raise the annual debt service amount, but it seems like we are, we're paying a little bit of a premium to push out the principal.
Yes, perhaps if I take you to page four, and you could see a couple of the different other examples, maybe this will help with the explanation. And I certainly can get more apples-to-apples comparison. And Doug did allude to me, we'd like to see some different styles and how we settled on the wrap style. So on page four, the first main box, that's your 18-year optimal wrap. In the optimal wrap, this is going to create the lowest annual debt service cost. The next is a 30-year wrap. And this is just to illustrate, if we do a wrap longer than the optimal year, all you're doing is pushing out into higher interest rates. This costs roughly 19 basis points in extra basis cost, and it doesn't save you anything by extending the term. In fact, it costs an extra $20,000 a year. And then previously, we were running a level debt service. The level debt service is going to allow you a step-down in future years, but your payment instead of a million six, your new budgetary debt service would be 2.3. So the wraparound is the best budgetarily, and allows you to add on the bonds without going past the 20-year term.
I'd also think about it in terms of, we know we're going to have to borrow additional funds to do the additional elementary center, so you want to try to keep this as level as possible budgetarily moving forward. You're just going to complicate issues when we go to do the second bond issue.
And for those of you who maybe haven't seen some of our previous runs, this is part of a multi-phase we've been running. So that's part of why the optimal wrap was favored for this particular amortization. Did that answer your questions, or?
Yeah, it did. Yeah, and the different scenarios that you put together did also...
Great. And a lot of this, if you're not familiar with bonds, I mean, these are great questions, like stretching it out with a wrap. It truly just does create additional costs. And then the level payment is great if you can afford it, but knowing you have other projects, it could push your debt service budget into an annual amount that becomes uncomfortable. So I think the optimal wrap is the best way to at least approach this phase, and we can obviously check out all these other options when we're looking at the next phase.
Alicia, the other thing I would be concerned about, too, is if we're doing another issue and we do a level wrap, it could affect our bond rating for the next issue, don't you think? Because our debt service is going to be, our annual debt service is going to go too high.
Yeah, we had this, this came up on the Moody's call, so they were concerned about how we were going to phase in, if there was another bond issue, and making sure that the increases to the annual debt service was manageable. So Doug did a really good job of answering that question, knowing there could be future operational savings. And like I said, I think this is the best approach, given where we are in this phase of the project, and all these other structures could be reevaluated when we have a better idea what the next phase looks like. Thank you, very good questions. Back to page three, there's some people who don't like numbers, so we like to illustrate what a wraparound really looks like. The black bar chart is your existing debt service at the $6.3, $6.4 million. And then you can see how the new money for IMS just wraps around it, creating an overall net level debt service. The good thing is you're slightly buffered from interest rates, meaning we do have a fill-in year in 2040. So as interest rates rise, you'll see a little bit of an increase in the early years where it's interest-only, but we do have some room in the 2040 year to kind of buffer with the volatile rate movement we've seen with the war on Ukraine, inflation, cost of oil, and all the other things the market is trying to absorb right now. And then page five is just a nice little snippet of what we're dealing with on a daily basis. As I mentioned, the inflation, supply chain, and the geopolitical conflicts have really pushed the market into a correction territory. We're all very anxious to see what the Fed has to say tomorrow. I think it's fairly certain that the Fed's only going to raise rates a quarter point, and do we see any market retraction? We're not really sure, but as I mentioned, we're looking to sell bonds if the board would pass the resolution next Tuesday, shortly thereafter, just to see if there's any momentum from this Fed meeting that isn't in the positive. So I think the district is aptly timed, and rates are kind of moving in the wrong direction daily, so we are trying to move as quickly as we can to position the district to sell these bonds. Does anybody have any financial questions?
One other question I had, so Doug, remember, we were looking at kind of our projected total payroll costs going out over the next 10 years and probably within four years, because we're going to have a very high percentage of turnover, a large number of teachers leaving the top of the pay scale and new ones starting at the bottom. We're actually see our total payroll costs, you know, and benefits, paysers, things like that, start to decrease and create some cushion that, you know, is there a concept of a variable, you know, these, not a variable rate, but a variable payment, so that we can actually, you know, rather than have to rely on, you know, increasing a lot of taxes, push it to where we start creating that cushion in our budget due to retirements? And it'd be kind of a variable, it'd be a more of a variable principal payment as we go out, you know, over the next five years?
I think you'd always have the option of paying off debt early, too. I mean, so you could find that gap in your budget down the road as you have retirements, move it to a capital reserve, and pay off some of the debt a little earlier than you had planned to.
Yeah, okay. Okay. So kind of what we're looking at here is more of a worst, you know, worst case in terms of, you know, timeframe and, you know, total interest payments.
Correct.
This bond issue will likely carry a call feature, since it's over $10 million, it's considered a non-bank qualified bond issue. That will have an eight-to-10-year call feature. So that may give the district some time to see how those positions fall off, and how you replace it, and where those savings are. So you could take the salary reserves and move it to the capital reserve, so when these bonds become callable, we can refinance them. And at that point, you can change the structure of the bonds any way you would like.
Okay. Okay, that's good.
If there's no further financial questions, I'll turn this over to Jamie Inferera, again, who's acting as bond counsel, and it's her resolution that you will, do they have a draft?
It was not. We'll put it in this Friday, so that they have it for next week.
Sure. Good evening, everyone. So Alicia said, my name's Jamie Inferera with Dinsmore &amp; Scholl, here representing Chris Brewer this evening, who I know has been a longtime bond counsel for the school district. And I just wanted to quickly take you through the resolution and kind of the legal side of it in papering the bond deal. And the first step is to, is for the school district to adopt a resolution, which you will be considering at your meeting next week. And this resolution will look very similar to resolutions you have passed in your prior bond deals in 2016 and 2012. And perhaps the most important function is that it pledges the full faith, credit, and taxing power of the school district. So that's the collateral for the bond issuance, and meaning that the school district will agree to pay the money back. And it also sets forth the project description, which here is for the middle school renovation project. And it also authorizes the sale of the bonds to PNC. So PNC, or the school district sells the bonds, and then PNC agrees to buy them, and will subsequently market the bonds and place them with the bondholders. And so by executing the bond purchase agreement, which you will do on the day of the sale of the bonds, PNC agrees to buy these bonds regardless. And the resolution also authorizes a filing with the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development, or DCD for short. Anytime a governmental unit wants to borrow money, we have to go through DCD. And one of the reasons we go through DCD is so that it can confirm that the school district has enough capacity to borrow money. And the school district can borrow up to 225% of its borrowing base, which is the average past three years of revenues plus any outstanding debt. So we do that calculation anytime we're looking to do a bond issuance. And our resolution also has your standard tax covenants and tax language, so that the school district will maintain the tax-exempt status of the bonds, and then there's securities law covenants in there as well. And the school district will have to provide annual continuing disclosure information to bondholders, which the school district currently does, because it has outstanding debt already. And finally, the resolution will authorize designated officers of the school district to proceed forward and take all actions needed to consummate the transaction and prepare, will prepare the closing documents, and then the school district officials will sign them. So that's the general gist of the resolution. Again, it's the first step kind of in the process. We'll go forward, we'll make the DCD filing after the bonds are sold, and then there's usually about a 30-day window between the date of the sale of the bonds and the closing, so we can get through that DCD process. So we'll continue to work with your solicitor, Doug, Alicia, and the PNC team as we move forward. But I'm happy to answer any questions about the kind of the legal, the legal side of the bond process.
So Doug, this will be a motion on the 22nd.
There will be a motion next week to approve that resolution, and then, once we have that signed off on, we'll be ready to go. Like they said, they'll probably be ready to go to market within a day or two.
Okay.
And then ours is trying to open whatever you said, our solicitor, she can't open it.
It might be an issue with my computer, though, not you. I'll let you do it tomorrow.
Okay. And Doug, we'll get copies of all that by Friday.
Yes, they'll be placed on board docs by Friday.
I would like to point one item out on that resolution, so there's no confusion or no one's real nervous when you get a copy of that on Friday. A not-to-exceed resolution is basically authorizing us to sell bonds, and there's still a lot of moving parts. There's less moving parts, because we're going to sell bonds very close to your meeting date. But we're locked into a principle of maturity for every year we're amortizing bonds. So I want you to know, it's very, very common for a not-to-exceed resolution to be about 20% higher than what you're actually going to borrow. So if you see a $50 million number, I don't want anyone to be concerned, there is zero chance we're going to sell $50 million worth of bonds. We're going to fund a $42 million project, and it's likely those bonds are going to sell at a premium, and we're actually going to sell less than $42 million. But I don't want anyone to see that on Friday and to absolutely have their heart drop or their stomach get turned. That is a normal legal requirement, sadly, that we have to leave a buffer in every maturity as interest rates go up and down, no different than your mortgage-style amortization. I have to have the ability to move principal between the maturities, and since we're not selling bonds on the day you're voting, I do have to have flexibility in every maturity. So that is a structuring issue and not an indication of how many bonds are going to be sold in anyway.
Many moons ago, they would do these sales, and then we'd have to have a board meeting that day to approve it. Because there was no fluctuation, we didn't know what the numbers would be until that day. And I remember being on the phone, like, watching and sitting in the office of the attorneys, watching them come in, but that's changed in recent years, probably for the last 10 or 12 years, maybe more. I'm getting older than I think.
There's a maximum schedule that will be attached at the end of the resolution. It goes right along with that concept. That's just the maximum parameters that are set, so Alicia and her team are able to tailor the deal to get you, to get you the best rate. So please don't look at that and think, you know, oh, my gosh.
This is what the bond sale's going to look like.
This is different than what we said at the meeting. That's just the maximum schedule that we have to, we have to include by law in the resolution.
So Mr. McCloson, is that what we're seeing under number 13 in finance? Basically, that not-to-exceed number? It's approval of bond resolution number five, 2022?
Yes, that's the resolution.
Okay, good. I had a minor heart attack whenever I saw the coupon rate of 6%. So thank you.
Perfect. Sorry for the premature heart attack. I tried to save most of you from heart attacks.
Just one question on, you know, the next round that we'll probably be looking for. Does this, you know, bond resolution do anything to our, you know, borrowing rating? Is it going to have a negative impact on the next time that we go to borrow, which may be about the same amount? Should we be looking at doing more upfront? You know, is, because we are probably looking at a very similar bond a little bit later in the year, and so is this one going to have a negative impact on our ability to get a favorable rate?
I don't believe so. I don't anticipate it, because we already somewhat discussed that with Moody's when we had our bond rating call a week ago. So they're quite aware that we were looking at doing future borrowings in the next couple of years.
Right, okay.
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Anything else? No? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming in.
My pleasure.
Next up, SiteLogic. Anthony, do you have a presentation on that? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Good to see you again. I'm Rick Evans. I'm looking at my experience. Thank you, Vice President, Vice Colonel, Lieutenant, Officer, Mr. Rivera. Yeah, the early brief presentation tonight with us, a recap of last time, just to repractice the curriculum. The project schedule again, for Phase One, has two timelines to it, two construction practices to it. One of them is completed in August, and we have the October work. If we flip over to the phase of October, as you can see, the green area is Phase One hanging up and turning over the time for the student's study year, as well as for classrooms directly on that. The area highlighted in bright blue is the early start area, actually the most late, or early start of October completion. So everything you see, that is in October completion. Then if we flip to the second floor, there's some smaller areas to develop. Phase One B, October completion. What we presented last time to you was a GISA budget, $13 million, $1,000. We arrived at that through the budget, and the reason to the budget, we added the miles to the length, Phase Two length, just in order to balance the project for GISA, I believe. So we put that in there. So we added the budget together with the miles, we gave a GISA budget of $13 million. Another question that was asked was about soft costs. So I thought we presented that in detail. As you see in front of you, I'll highlight some of the larger ticket items in there. Here, the design pieces, the top, the ocean, which is our insurance, the control insurance program. Minus and plus, there's some bigger ticket items, there's a lot of smaller items in there that are quarters directed in over the big four items. So we indicated as a GISA, or items that would typically be used in soft cost estimates, we've done a good job of now improving the GISA. If you need a second to look at that, if there's any questions, soft costs, I'd be glad to answer those. If you feel very confident with this number, or will hold through in the project, so we don't see a lot of barriers to going out to the project. Questions? This is also, what we presented last time is the overall project. Apparently, as I said, we have a pretty thorough review of the Page One, we also have a pretty thorough grasp of the soft cost. What we don't have is a Phase Two design, actually we have conceptual design at this point. So it's just a large project. We think it's a ample budget. This was really designed for the intent of borrowing, if anyone's looked at. We didn't want it underborrowed. We know that rates are available now, so if anything, if there's a little bit of hindsight, so I think we have to save some of the borrowing, the Phase Two budgets, anything that's not in Page One, but obviously we... So since the last time of the year, we review, we get out of here with that, we process through the process, we have subcontractors. I would say all these subcontractors are fully invested in the area. It's all essentially working subcontractors, very high-quality subcontractors, and these are processes, we have the ability to pre-qualify these subcontractors. So everyone on the list is qualified to give a good job. And the big contractors, it's a very good process. Very good, and we have very good coverage, and our activity, which is passing, like $10,000 right now, the market's busy. There are many jobs that will be employed, only a little, some of those, we had covered on the recent story, major story, we had at least three bids, we feel very confident the range of bids it's also given. So we feel really good about the price that we got, because we said we got, in terms of levers in the bid process, we put a lot of effort into it. I'm very happy with the results here. We are, are in public, 40 basis thousand under, the budget estimate that we do, 390, and also a potential draw, roughly almost $10,000 under all rates, there's very low risk to the market. So we're off to a good start here. We're having a good process and having good results. And we'll say that in either quadrant, we're saying that...
How the forms from it. Because how you probably have that something completed. He wants to go out.
Okay.
He will be sitting there reading, you know.
Okay. Very good.
Same thing with the law.
Any questions on call? Anything else to cover?
Uh, no.
No?
Questions. I guess that's what we got.
Okay. Yeah, what's that? Yeah, well, I was including Kevin too. Do you have any questions or anything to share? So, okay. Okay. Very good. Thank you. Thanks for coming in. I'm going to open up for public comments. Any public comments on the agenda items that are on our meeting agenda for tonight?
I think we do have one caller.
One call in?
Yeah. Sandy, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Okay, you're in the board meeting. You have two minutes to make your comments.
Sure. My name is Sandy Vlachma, 3540 Valley Drive. I would just like to make a notice that the next time there's a presentation can be, can we stay focused on the presentation and can a microphone be given to the speaker? Those of us watching online could not hear anything that the gentleman from SiteLogic has said.
Yeah, we can, we can adjust that. We'll make, we'll make conscious effort to give them a better microphone.
Okay. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Have a good evening. Bye-bye.
Any other call ins?
No other call ins. Up, somebody's coming in. Luann, are you there?
Hello?
Luann?
Uh, this is Beth. Yeah.
Okay, you are in the board meeting. You have, state your name and your address, and you have two minutes to make your comments.
Okay, thank you. My name is Beth Opat. My address is 555 Closton Road, and I am just calling again in support of Dogwood Charter School. I know we were not on the agenda, but we just want to continue to show that we have supporters in the community that are, want us and need us for their children and their families. And I know a lot of times when we associate charter schools, we think of taking money from the schools, but I want to remind you that a lot of our supporters and a lot of our students that are pre-enrolled are either at other charter schools or private schools are currently homeschooled. So, in regards to that and money is more of a neutral aspect, since you are not currently receiving some of the funds for them. I'm not sure how much time I have left, but I just want to again say that we hope that you have an open mind and willing to have the courage to make the right stance in supporting Dogwood Charter School for our children. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. As the caller mentioned, that's not on the agenda, so any other comments like that, we prefer to keep to the end of the meeting when we address any topics. Right now, we're going to focus on the agenda items. Any other comments? For Curriculum Committee, Mr. Scalzo, you walk us through those items.
Okay, under Curriculum Committee, number one, approval of AP Literature Curriculum. Number two, school climate surveys. Three, agreement with Rubicon West. Number four, approval of application for new student activity club, Team Blackhawk, and approval of application for new student activity club, and that is called Bethel Park High School Esports Team. Discussion on any of the topics.
Discussion on number two not to be put on the consent agenda. Those surveys are not completed.
Yeah, we're going to put, we're going to take some feedback from the board and make revisions, so this one is not, not up for, I think we pulled that off the agenda or move it to April.
I have a question with the Rubicon West, the Atlas program. If somebody in the room could explain to the community how this will benefit our academics and how this will align with our strategic plan.
Sure, I'd be glad to do that. So, one of the big items in the strategic plan, one of the big sections relative to curriculum and instruction, and the, the plan asks for the district to both align and clearly articulate a curriculum that would exist currently maybe in dusty binders or different places on our website, et cetera. So, we did some evaluation analysis of different software packages and found that the Atlas system contains our curriculum framework that we desire for our teachers to use and has a public-facing portal for community folks to see the curriculum that's written in there. So, it, it had all the features that we need and want in a tool, and the best part about it is the analysis that you can do with the data once it's been compiled in the system, running reports and generating, you know, trends or gaps, overlaps in curriculum that can be revised with time. This is one step in the larger strategic planning goal to get a 21st century-relevant curriculum, to get courses that are working with outdated materials, opportunity to update. You know, we're talking about renovation at IMS with some steam rooms being added, so we're getting, making sure that steam is a part of our curriculum, integrating our curriculum. So, there's a lot in the strategic plan. Getting a mapping tool is probably the first baby step to accomplish some of the rest.
So, with this, you know, a couple of things that we identified in the strategic plan is kind of the inconsistency of curriculum across, you know, buildings and classrooms, and maybe the lack of continuity across curriculum through the grades. Does this address that? And does it, is there, do you see some examples of how this helps us do that?
Sure, right. So, the, so let's, we'll just take, for instance, in an elementary classroom that Franklin would be working from a binder of curriculum materials that have been handed down from generation of teacher to generation, and what this system would do is it kind of digitizes and reposes it, all of it together in one place, so that no matter what building you're in, you're teaching third grade math, you're working from the same binder of materials, of instructional timing, the calendar material, what the assessments are for that course, what the instructional materials that are provided are also included in that map, scope and sequence, the content of the course has all been prescribed. Now, you know, the, the, the work of adopting it is one thing. Getting it, the curriculum in there is going to be the bulk of our first or second year of the strategic planning process, is having teachers and committee writing those courses down.
Right.
And, uh, once it's, once it's written down and captured in that digital binder, then we, we then have a tool by which we can hold them accountable for following it, you know, fidelity to that curriculum.
Yeah. Okay, good.
Can I just add one thing? I, I use Atlas, and it's, it is really awesome.
Is it?
So, if you guys want to see, yeah, I can show you mine. It's.
Boffy, I, I use it too, so we can share and compare notes.
I mean, I think one of the features that puts the Rubicon product above the others was this communities aspect, that they have exemplars for almost any course you can think of, that a teacher in our community could access that exemplar and draw ideas about improvement and, and how, way to, to change their course for the better, looking at those exemplars. And further, if we have good exemplars ourselves, we can submit them to that community for vetting and potentially, you know, publicly share it to other educational institutions, some of our better courses as well. So, that communities aspect was a real draw. I've got that notion that you guys are proud of your work, and that's, would be true for us too.
Would this be somewhere where the teachers could house good extension activities for particular lessons and share those out so that everyone has access to a toolbox?
Yeah, correct.
And remediation and that kind of thing?
You can attach to your map, any documents can be attached to the map, and anybody who teaches the course would have access to that.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Yeah, that's great.
Any other questions on any of the other items?
I would just point out that items four and five are, are, these clubs would be student-led, so there's no cost to the district. The teachers who are listed in the application are, would volunteer to supervise the students, but they don't plan the activities, they don't participate in them, they're just monitors or supervisors. These would be strictly student-led clubs.
So, there's no facilitator or extra duty assignment?
There is not.
Okay.
No.
Okay, well, if there are no other questions or comments, I would recommend that item one, three, four, and five be put on the consent agenda.
Okay, thank you. Mr. McGregor, personnel?
Yes, there are five items under personnel today. One, approval of extra duty responsibility program. Two, acceptance of resignations. Three, change of assignment. Four, an MOU with the Bethel Park Federation of Teachers. And five, site agreement with the Bethel Park Transportation Department Council 84. Any questions? Discussion points?
Okay, being that there is none, I'd like to move one through five forward to the consent agenda.
Okay. Very good. Facilities.
Yes, one item, just for discussion only purposes, adding a restroom concession stand to the practice fields of the high school. This has been a topic for, since the high school was built. It was never completed by previous administrations. I think it's something at this time that this board here take a hard look at and meet the needs and the services that our community, as they're using those fields up there that we move forward with, process of adding a new structure up there. Keep in mind, the, the high school construction, I think Dr. J can add, there is utilities already there. There was a plan to put those there. Either of you and Nick want to expand a little bit more on that, what's there and available to us?
Yeah, since I was here when all that occurred, the, there's a small building that was constructed just to house the electric aspect that, that feeds the overhead lights at night and the surrounding areas. There's also sewage and water to that area, so if and when a building's constructed, all the main facilities are in place.
In the area we have targeted, just for, for public interest, it would be in that back corner adjacent to the building that's already there, correct?
Yes, it's already, we have, in the spring, we put Porter Johns that are real close to that area. We've been doing that for the last 10 years.
And I know the municipality gets a lot of complaints along with us regards to when the fields are used, that there is no facilities up there. I know previously when we were both working there, Dr. J and Sandy, we were trying to be good hosts and accommodate by even opening the high school, but that got to be burdened some, and, and expense towards us.
Yeah, the proximity of location, the restroom from, you know, using perhaps the, the stadium restrooms or even the high school restrooms from those fields is just way too far. It's not reasonable. So, we need something that's closer to those two turf fields as well as the softball field up on top. Across the road, you have the ninth grade baseball, and some slow pitch softball as well uses it, so we need something that's reasonable in distance from those areas.
This is actually a very top request that came in through the survey we did as a part of the strategic plan, and it was a write-in, but it was very common, very high on the list, so I think it's important. Dr. Walsh, have you talked to the municipality?
I did, yes. I'm, correct. So, when we, last week's, the board will recall in last week's facilities meeting, there was some suggestion that the municipality may wish to contribute towards this project, and I was able to have a good conversation with Lawrence Christian about that, and they are willing to commit, using their stimulus money from the American Rescue Plan. I believe right now they're putting $100,000 on the table for this project. The, if we go with the modular facility, that probably would amount to about half the cost, maybe a little less than half.
From a parent perspective, that has had a child play on that field since seventh grade, and a younger child to try and use Porta-Dons, we have a WPISL or AL championship softball team that is about to start their season again this year, and your fall slow pitch team won the Western Pennsylvania Association also. Our facilities compared to everybody else fail. We need to do something, and now. You know, honestly, it's not going to benefit me because I have a senior, but it's going to benefit Mrs. Hoppy and her child that still plays. It's, the, these girls are, we have to go to the Porta-John. Oh, well, no. I mean, they're running everywhere else, or, you know, we're taking an extra 10 minutes to try and get them into the high school on a Sunday to make sure somebody's there to open it up, to just use the restrooms in between games. You know, and the municipality is taking a hit. You've got junior football on there, you've got junior lacrosse on there. These are all kids that go to our schools. We need to have the facilities to support them.
I'll just add to the discussion that Mr. Sloan, our athletic director, has also secured a donation from Highmark for $40,000 to go toward that facility as well.
Okay.
And, and I think also, we may be able to secure some funding from a private sources outside, within the community. We're getting some feedback that there may be some people willing to step forward and donate as a private citizen. So, I think the timing's good there that we, you know, I love to see the goal to have it done by this summer, you know, so maybe next week we can move forward on it and, and get the wheel moving.
Yeah, I mean, that's good with the funding sources. It's sounding better all the time, so, yeah, let's, what do we need to do from a next step? Do we need to get, you know, architects involved?
We're, we're actually looking at pricing with different companies, so we're just kind of going out there, outsour, you know, sourcing what we can to see what facility would cost, and then we'd probably have to put a slab down up there, but like they said, the facility, the, the utilities are already there, so it's just a matter of the, the concrete slab and finding the build, fabricated building that meets our needs for restrooms and concession.
That we also have storage there? I mean, we.
Yeah, I think, we're looking for something we can customize.
We've got all kinds of RENA storage units over there. We look like the, the rental section for a house, you know, come by your, you know, here.
The three priorities would be concession restroom and some storage.
And, and storage for the high school coaches that use those facilities would be a high priority, a little more than the community that uses them. High school, I mean, they've got to carry all their equipment up and down. A lot of them put it in the car because it's just not feasible, so I would highly encourage enough, talk to those coaches to make sure we have enough abundance of security, of storage.
So, it's safe to say, Mr. McCaslin, we can start getting some permission for awards?
We've already started, but we're, we're going to continue to try to get, firm up some pricing and put a project together.
Hopefully, April will have.
We'll, we'll try, yeah.
Okay.
I don't want to make any promises, but yes, we'll try. I, I don't know what lead times on those items are either now, so, you know, I haven't really done that, so this is a new area for me, so we'll, we'll work on it. We'll, we'll make it a priority.
Well, thank you to the administration, because like I said, it's been 10 years, it's been overdue, and I think the community will greatly appreciate it once we get it up. Thank you, folks.
I just want to add that I have ordered a couple modular type of setups, and it, last time I did was about a 12-week lead time, and that was about three years ago. So, I imagine that is going to be slightly longer than that now.
Okay. I had a conversation with Russ Bucusa, who's from the industry. He indicated to me that if we, the board was acting in April, we could have it completed by August. That would be a timeline that would be reasonable in his mind, given the construction time and, you know, shipping delays and things that we might experience in the process.
Great. Thank you, servant.
Okay. Finance, Mr. Grisbeck.
All right, tonight we have 13 items under finance. Number one, March 2022 salaries and bills. Number two, February 2022 financial report. Number three, budgetary transfers. Number four, AIU program of services budget. Number five, Kennedy School of Driving. Number six, approval of student services contract for the Hope Academy contract. Number seven, broker of record for insurance services. Number eight, payment for replacement of the NAMs cafeteria floor. Number nine, exoneration of delinquent taxes. Number 10, memorandum of understanding for the, with the AIU. Number 11, agreement with Flying Cork Media LLC. Number 12, fund balance commitment. And number 13, approval of bond resolution number five, 2022. Does anyone have any questions on any of those 13 items?
Um, can you, and I think it's Mr. McCaslin, can you give us an explanation on number seven, based on the email we all received?
Yeah, the broker of record, I remember I'd asked you a couple months ago to put out an RFP for a new broker of record for the district. We hadn't changed it for several years. I wasn't completely happy with the services I was getting from our current broker. Thought we could maybe put it out there and see what office services we could get. So, we did that process. We sent it out to, oh gosh, was it six? I think six or seven brokers. We've got several responses back. We interviewed four of the firms from the written responses we got. Mr. Picianari, myself, my assistant, Ms. Copie, and Mr. Slezak sat in on some of the interviews, and after that process, we came to the recommendation that we have on the board tonight. So, it is a change in our brokers, but we'll change currently our underwriters with our insurance policies, but they'll put, they'll be the broker that'll be responsible for putting our packages out to market and working with our safety committees and providing all the employment services that they have. And the brokers that we interviewed felt they had a much more robust series of offerings to support our HR department especially, and a lot of great ideas to bring to our employees' safety committee to make it a safer workplace. We were very impressed with two or three of the brokers that came in. Unfortunately, our current broker was not one of those, so, but you have the recommendation before you.
Yeah, good.
You're welcome.
For item eight, is the NAMs floor now complete? It looks like that was the last payment.
Yeah, that, that project is completed. I think this is the retainage money that we, we had for that project.
Understood, thanks. Any other questions for anyone?
Just on number nine, I think most people can, when they read, understand, but just a little more clarification for the public on what we're looking at here. Is anybody able to?
This was a parcel that the county approached us about. Anne Marie, can you speak to this a little more closely? I know that this came from, from the solicitor and Ms. Burkhardt, a recommendation to waive these taxes so that they could use it for a public park. It's a, it's a not usable parcel of land, and it just, it, they never, when they, whenever it changed over, it never got put on the tax exempt list, and it really is kind of a public piece that shouldn't be taxed. It's not a very hard.
And it's known it's donated to the borough.
Yes.
And the borough's basically asking us for the.
Correct.
Okay, that's just for clarification.
That is the extent of the clarification. I mean, the recommendation from our office would be to, and what we shared with the requester would be that we put it in front of the board, and it is ultimately your decision. I, I would, I would say there is no recommendation strongly one way or the other. It is up to you if you want to forgive this.
Any other questions? All right, hearing none. I move items one through 13 to the consent agenda for next week.
Thank you. Policy Committee, Mr. Turner. Looks like we have one coming up that is the final reading.
Right. The revision and third and final reading to go to the consent agenda is the revisions to Policy 610 and 611, and then the first readings of three for Policy 105.1, Instructional Materials and Resources, and then again, Policy 105.11 and 105.4, reconsideration of material selection and curriculum and parent guardian rights. So, I move number one to the consent agenda.
And then under other, it looks like that student agreement, move that to the consent agenda also.
I agree.
And that takes us to the end of our list, so now we can open it up for public comments on anything you want to talk about.
We do have one caller.
Okay.
Daniel, are you on the line?
Uh, yes, I am.
Okay, just state your name and address, and then you have two minutes to make your comments.
Okay, my name is Daniel Broadland. I live at 1130 Boyer View Street, and I just wanted to voice my continuous support of the Dogwood Charter School and the approval of their charter.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
No other callers?
No other callers.
Any bails?
Yes.
Oh, you can speak from there, yeah.
They're not going to be able to hear her.
Oh, yeah, we would like you to speak from the microphone.
Hi, my name is Christina Huth. I live at 1130 Boyer View Street, and my question is, I noticed on the reason given for denying the charter school is a lack of community support, so my question to the board is, what can we do as parents that want the school to go through to show community support? What are you looking for?
Yeah, do you want to respond to that?
Um, just so that we are all clear on public comment, it's not a question and answer session, so we will take your comment under advisement, but we will be responding in this right now.
Oh, sorry, I was unaware of that.
Nope, that's okay.
Thank you for your time.
Anything else?
Hi, Ron Workmeister, 4750 Robert Road. I'm appalled by you, Dan Grisbeck. You have disgraced Bethel Park publicly on Twitter with your very mature and hateful slur of a well-respected governor simply because he did not agree with your contorted and evil opinion about children with gender dysphoria. Let me remind you that you represent Bethel Park by having the privilege to be on the school board and are expected to act in a professional and respectful manner by not using the F-word on social media to attack respected official or any person for that matter. Numerous studies have proven scientifically that children as old as 18 have difficulty in making life-altering decisions and need to be protected from irreversible harm. A small percentage of medical personnel have tried to make their case by justifying the abuse of a child's body to sex change, to change the sex to, due to the child's gender dysphoria, and to use the excuse that they can be suicidal, conveniently ignores the proven factual data that later in that child's life, they have a much higher risk of suicide for what they have done to their bodies. Most of these operations and hormone therapies are not reversible and have irreparable harm to these confused children, and sometimes have resulted in death, and in fact, that most children thinking that they want to be a, in fact, most children thinking they want to be a transsexual at a young age, realize later in life that they are either simply a homosexual or grow out of these feelings altogether. Explain to us why parents have the sole responsibility over simple matters like whether or not an aspirin may be given to their child, but on an issue which is critical and life-changing as sex change, these parents have to relinquish their rights. No, the Texas, Texas governor got it right. So, you, Dan Grisbeck, should publicly apologize for the display of hate for disgracing Bethel Park with your crude and immature use of the F-word against a respected governor, and secondly, I challenge you to explain to us why a person does not think a young child should be protected in the case I have mentioned. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Any board comments?
Yes, so, to make it clear to you, I will always stand up for the rights of children, especially marginalized children, whenever they're being attacked by elected officials. I'm sorry that you were offended by my choice of words, but I very well may use those words again.
Any other comments? Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
Second, who's in favor?
I.
Anybody oppose? Thank you. Thank you for coming. See you next week.